My name is Scott Lambert. Today, we're having the first of two public meetings that the Board of Supervisors will hold regarding the DEP Proposed Remedial Action Plan for the Bishop Tube site. Joining me today on my right is Vice Chairman Rich Orlo, and on my left Sue Drummond and John Nagel Township Manager further to Sue's left, and our staff is also here in the building as well. The date for the second meeting has not yet been determined, but is likely to be in January of 2022. The township's draft comments to the DEP will be presented at that meeting. The purpose of today's meeting is for our township consultants, BSTI, to explain the proposed plan to the Board and to the public. And the Board intends to listen to, consider, and gather comments from you folks, as well as to provide for a question and answer period to be led by BSTI and our solicitor, Steve Hahn, who is online. I will add that here in the meeting, we have BSTI representatives. And if I can introduce you folks, Ethan Proust is online, and here is Nick Santelli and Tony Ultimately, the goal of the two public meetings is to get the public input on the plan and for the township to provide written comments to the DEP. I'd like to start also with some ground rules for today. There was a sign up sheet in the hallway. If you've not signed up already, please sign in or do so at the end of the meeting. The audience will be permitted in the room, and we are limited at this point in time to COVID restrictions. Masks are required. Everyone is wearing them. We are going to have the meeting end hard time at four o'clock. About two hours will be provided for comments and questions. If you have comments and questions, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Online, I guess you'll be raising your hand, and Donna Weickert will be allowing you in for a comment period. Just waiting for two people to come in. After these remarks, we will begin with a 20-minute video from the Bishop Tube Clean and Green group. It is being presented at their request. Following that video, BSTI will present a slideshow summarizing the plan. This will take approximately 30 minutes. The meeting will be open for public comments and questions after the PowerPoint by BSTI. Finally, in response to comments from the community, a letter was sent to Pat Patterson, DEP Regional Director, from the Supervisors requesting that the DEP allow questions and provide responses at the November 9th public meeting. So with that, I guess we will begin with the Clean and Green video.
Although we have not yet seen the DEP's plan recommendation, we can already see a deterioration in its confidence.
I know this site, and I know this area, and I know another thing. You are not helpless. You are all impacted by this site. How many of you live anywhere near it? You all moved away to the people that have gotten cancer, to the people in our neighborhood and village way that have gotten cancer, and to the level of where, forget this cleanup. The whole fact is, leave the site alone. It needs to be left alone. Don't touch it.
Nobody knew what was going on in that little facility out there, what they were releasing, anything. It made me really angry. Agencies that are supposed to be looking out for your health and your environment find ways to avoid it at times because somebody comes in with money.
My daughter is a survivor of brain tumors. She had three brain tumors. And when we heard about what Bishop Tube was about, when it was open, it closed in 98, I believe, but while it was open, we used to smell things in the air that smelled like chlorine or something, and, you know, you didn't think too much about it. When we started diving into what Bishop Tube was about, we found out that TCEs are something that we're using, and the fumes, when they're airborne, can affect a fetus of a woman who's carrying a baby. And Liz was born in 1990. We smelled the fumes all the time. And then that connection about her brain tumor and the fumes from the TCEs and from the factory got us to thinking, you know, what this was all about. And really, the tipping point was when they wanted to put houses on a toxic waste site that was designated as a brownfield site, and DEP for 17 years had sat on it. And then all of a sudden, our township changed the site from zoning, the zoning from industrial to residential, and the proposal was to put 280 townhomes on toxic land, on 13 acres, landlocked land as well.
It's a, it's a bad spot because it's only one access road in, which is underneath a decrepit tunnel that was built in 1909 for the train. There's an oil storage facility property right next to this, so there's, whenever they purge the lines, you smell petroleum. It's just the wrong spot to put housing. I mean, you know, it's, if you saw the site, you have a railroad on the north, you have a railroad on the south, you have an oil storage facility, you have a creek, and then you have our neighborhood. And to put housing there just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
This is my town. I live here. I grew up here. My children live here. My grandchildren live here, and I owe it to them, you know? If I have something from it, I got it, you know? It'll come out later on at some point in my life, and there's not a whole lot I can do about it now, but I cannot, in good moral conscience, let this continue. And it seems to me that going at the local level is the only way to stop it. I mean, if I, I've said, if I have to, I will be 90 years old, and I will stand on Route 30 with a, with one of those cardboard sandwich things, and I will say, do not buy a property in there because you don't want to live there, you know? You don't want your children growing up there. And, and I've spent my whole life working with kids and protecting kids, and I will not allow anyone to live on property that I feel is knowingly, that I feel is contaminated, without trying to speak out and trying to let them know.
We are doing an educational demonstration on the Bishop Tube site for the public.
I am protesting the pollution at the Bishop Tube site.
Just to get the word out, hopefully people will start Googling it and paying more attention to it and realize that it's a bigger issue that we need to resolve instead of just letting it go.
And it needs to be cleaned up to protect the community, and they've known about the toxins going off-site for years now at this point, and all people want is to have it preserved as open space, and I don't think that's too ridiculous to ask for considering what the people of this community have gone through.
It's important to me because Bishop Tube is right next to my neighborhood. I don't think I could live with myself knowing that I let a developer put property on a toxic site and people were living on it and could potentially be sickened by it. I, I couldn't just stand by and let that happen.
And I think the only way we're gonna beat this thing is if the community is involved and we have enough voices and continue to share our opinions and let the township know that we're serious about this situation.
This is really an education action, and our goal is to try to raise the profile of the toxic Bishop Tube site, the need to clean up the site, the need to protect the site from development that will inflict additional irreparable environmental harm, as well as exacerbate some of the problems associated with the current toxic condition, to alert people to the fact that they've got a toxic site in their community that the Department of Environmental Protection has been aware of for decades. And the thing is, is like, this is an entirely new audience. A couple of people are obviously aware, they're giving us the thumbs up, but most people we see looking carefully, right? Like, what is that? What's going on? So we really are accomplishing the goal of, you know, delivering this message to new audiences so that they can become informed and engaged.
We're a group of neighbors and friends who have banded together, and we basically have three goals. One, we want it cleaned up as can possibly be done safely. We have concerns about when they do go into cleanup, having further contamination in our neighborhood. Two, we want the people who are responsible for this held accountable because, yes, it will cost millions of dollars to clean this up, and those people are still out there. Many of those companies still exist. And three, we feel that it needs to be turned over to open space.
Since I've studied the effects of solvents on humans, in specifically the brain, I know that the effects of solvents have, affect health when they are either at a high dose over a short period of time, that's called a peak event, or when it's a low dose repeatedly over a long period of time, and that's called a chronic exposure. And unfortunately, the chronic exposure is very dangerous. That's what our concern is because TCE can vaporize. So it can be in the air, it can be in the soil when you walk on it or play on it or take your dog on it or play in the stream. This is what's making the community so anxious. There are so many ways to be exposed to it, and we're not satisfied to just ignore it and let some future generation have to deal with it.
It's been in the family for over 50 years, just a little mom and pop garden center. I had cancer a couple times, so people ask me about my cancer. My mom has cancer now. My dad had Parkinson's. Don't know if any of it's involved with Bishop Tube. I know no one else in our family has cancer or Parkinson's. My daughter wants to take this over, and it's almost scary for me, just not knowing what's gonna happen to Bishop Tube. Do I really want her to be around something like this? I had a friend that was up here for my first go-round of cancer, and she used to live in the village. She didn't know of a house along Village Way that someone in their household didn't have cancer, and that kind of started opening my eyes to it. And then somewhere in that point, we found out about, you know, Bishop Tube and what's happening. And it really makes you think. I mean, Village Way's a lot of houses, and for a lot of them to be, you know, having cancer, that's kind of says a lot. My customers are not too informed. It's really amazing to me when people see my sign of Clean and Green, how many of them don't know it. When I was wearing the, you know, the Clean and Green t-shirt every day, I'd have 12, 20 people or so say, what is that? What is that? I said, it's Bishop Tube behind me. Unless it's really touching you and affecting you, people don't seem to pay much attention to it.
It's a little hard to keep people engaged. Well, first the pandemic, that's a big concern for people. Obviously, it's overwhelming all of our lives, and the ripples from that, people have children, people have elderly parents and people to watch out for. So that combined with the fact that there has been no recent news about this, it's sunk below the surface for people. Their awareness level has gone down because nothing's happened in months. The developer's been stalling, and they've been doing their new plan and taking their time about it. So when there's nothing to report, people think nothing's happening, and it kind of goes out of focus for them. So we need to make sure the neighbors are aware that this is not done, not by a long I just distributed flyers down my street, which is about 80 houses or so. I ran into a neighbor whose backyard abuts the Bishop Tube site, and he was really happy to talk to me because he had not heard anything in months, and he wasn't sure about the status of the possible development. So we kind of looked through the flyer together, and he, his big concern is if they remediate the site, how would they control the toxicity? How would they prevent that from getting into his house, his yard? He's got young children, so he's really concerned about that. And he said that he would be attending the Zoom Township meeting. Even if 20 people attend the Zoom meeting because of that, and they'll already be our group, which is a large group, that's important. It's important for the Board to see that it's not just our little faces that are, that have been there all the time, that we've got new faces, and those people are just as concerned as we are.
I grew up on 80 Village Way in General Warren Village. My parents have lived in the same house there since 1965. As I hear the other people here speaking, it brings a lot of comfort to me, but it also brings a lot of sadness to me. So I have brain cancer. My next-door neighbor who lived on Woodview died of brain cancer. To hear, I believe it was the stalker say that they have a child that has brain tumors. My younger sister died of lung cancer. My next-door neighbor died of lung cancer that I grew up with. We grew up in, you know, right next to each other. There have to be countless more cases than I'm not aware of. So I just wanted to bring some human, just bring this to light to you, that you're dealing with reality here, of people's lives. I don't think, it doesn't seem to me like anybody's really understanding how bad it was there, how bad it is there. What you're dealing with here is life or death.
I just want to say, and it sounds, and it's been reiterated here, it sounds like you guys want to just okay this plan and then worry about it afterwards. So, you know, my question is, why can't we postpone the decision on the development plan now until the ongoing studies for meaning the property are complete? You know, you said you wanted input from the public. Everything, everybody tonight so far has been saying, please don't do this. So I really hope that you are listening to what we, the citizens of East Whiteland Township, have to say about this.
The Board definitely wants to postpone this decision and wait till all the environmental stuff is in. But the applicant will not give an extension of time beyond February. So the applicant's forcing us to take a vote of yes or no. So the option of waiting till all the information is in is not an option. We either have to vote yes with conditions to protect the environmental issues, or we have to vote no because we don't have enough environmental information. If we were to just not vote on it during the time period prescribed by the developer, it would become deemed approved, it would automatically be approved with no conditions at all.
Wouldn't that indicate, if the developer is not willing to wait until all of the information is in, what does that say about the developer's intentions? That's all I want to say.
The township, unfortunately, has given preliminary approval to, to the developer despite all of this going on, despite the fact that this site is so contaminated with dangerous toxins, and we all know it at this point, and the supervisors of the township, of East Whiteland Township, know about the toxic condition at the site and how dangerous it is. The supervisors have given the developers preliminary approval to pursue a residential development project on this site while it remains contaminated. We don't know to what degree, when, if, how this site is ever going to be cleaned up by responsible parties. It's really just shocking. But the residents and the Delaware Riverkeeper Network have been working together very, very hard to make clear to the supervisors that that's unacceptable. While we were not successful in our advocacy to get the supervisors to, to deny that preliminary approval, now the Delaware Riverkeeper Network has brought another legal action challenging that approval by the supervisors given to the developer. And, you know, we have a very passionate, powerful community that is working very, very hard to protect the Bishop Tube site from development, to battle for full, fair, complete cleanup to the highest legal standards applicable of this site with regards to the toxic contamination, and to secure its protection as natural open space for the benefit of the community. Look, this community has been suffering for, for decades because of the toxic contamination at this site. We owe it to nature and to the community to protect this as, as natural open space.
I believe our township elected officials have become used to accommodating any and every request by any business, and that they are not comfortable standing up and saying no.
I think the supervisors thought that they were doing the best that they could, but this is, this is part of the problem that it's been all along. It's always been the best that they can, could when they're fighting against the developer who's threatening to sue them. It's not about the rights of the citizens. It's not about the rights of this being a decent township for future generations. What they've never had before is a group so united. I think it's important to continue that because I, I think we do have a long way to go, but I think we are continuing to go in the, in the right direction. It's the only direction.
To let something go on and on and on verges on criminal to me, but that's the way I feel
If Clean and Green Bishop Tube hadn't formed, there may well have been an approved plan for 220-some-odd townhomes on, on the, on the site.
I will be honest and say that if it was just us as citizens putting this out there, that we probably couldn't do it because of the expertise that is needed to make sure that everything's being put out properly, to have the funding. So the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, we couldn't do this without their support, without their knowledge, without their, their lawyers.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn it over to you folks in terms of your slide presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll do my best to speak up, and please, somebody let me know if I'm not speaking up enough. The masks aren't helping. Thanks also for that introduction. I, I think it gives a, a good introduction to why people have valid reasons to be concerned about the remediation of this site and why everyone should be as aware as they can be about the technical details of what remediation is proposed, and really what is known and what is specifically being proposed at this point, and really what is not known and what is still to be determined in the remedial process. So to try to explain all that, we're gonna start with a little bit of background. It may be a little bit repetitious for folks who have, who've seen a lot about this site already, but it hopefully will give a little bit of perspective on the remedial actions that we're talking about. We'll explain then the process and some of the, the criteria that PADP is using in evaluating the remedies that they looked at and, and what they decided on, and kind of where things go from there. Interested in getting your feedback. We've had good feedback already, and, you know, we'll try to answer any technical Um, and, uh, you know, we'll try to answer any technical questions, which is our primary goal here. Any technical questions people may have to the best of our ability. So with that, if you just advance to the first slide. Um, so I just wanted to introduce the site. I'm sure everyone is...
I'm sorry to interrupt, just for help in following this. Will this presentation be available online? Or do people need to, to take a photo if you want to keep a slide in your brain?
That I don't know.
It'll be online, right Donna?
Okay, yeah. Okay, great. No, we have...
It's on our website.
Yeah, it sounds like there'll be no problem posting it on the website. So that'll be no problem. So the site consists of the former Bishop Tube facility, um, but the much larger portion of the site consists of the, the area affected by the groundwater plume, primarily TCE, um, that has extended a significant distance offsite. Um, and that's what this map illustrates here. I just added the brighter green highlighting to one of the existing maps from the remedial investigation report. It's a very large area, um, and that area where that TC plume exists is a mixture of commercial and also residential uses. And the Little Valley Creek runs right through it, um, which is, and that impact on the creek is one of the significant issues in the, in the remediation that we'll get to. If you want to just advance. Um, so this is a slide straight from the PADP presentation on the site. They did a good job of laying out some of the locations where different industrial activities occurred. Um, and these different industrial activities had different chemicals associated with them. So different parts of the site have different environmental impacts. Some areas have a lot of chlorinated solvents. Some areas that were used for degreasing metal. Some areas have inorganic contaminants that were associated with pickling metal products and acids. Um, and it, it's just important to understand the layout, and there'll be another version of this map later on as you try to understand what exactly is being proposed and most importantly, where with respect to site remediation. Thanks. I'll just touch on the timeline. I, it's, uh, not something I want to spend a lot of time on, but there has been a very long environmental history at the site. Um, you know, going back to the seventies when problems were first recognized, to the eighties when TC in particular was recognized as a problem. And there has been a lot of activity, um, but limited success in actually cleaning up any of these, uh, environmental impacts. And so there was in around 2007, 2008, there was an interim remedy that was put in place, was tested, but was never really operated. Um, and that was a remedy that focused primarily on the shallow soils and shallow groundwater, just the top 15 feet or so. Um, and then in 2015, most significantly, there was a, a field test for feasibility of some remedies, um, looking at some of the same technologies that are proposed in the current remedial plan, which we'll get to. Um, and those had mixed results. And that definitely goes into the decisions that need to be made about remediation moving forward. Next slide. So to speak about the range of contaminants that are present on the site a little bit more, um, the main focus has been on chlorinated solvents because those are present at the highest concentrations and extend the furthest offsite. And they're also present in all of the affected media. They're present in the soil at levels of concern. They're present in groundwater, and they also end up in the Little Valley Creek. But particularly for soil, there's also a, a range of other constituents that are present. Those haven't been as much a focus of the investigations, and so not all of them are as tightly delineated or precisely defined areas as the case for TCE. Um, and so that includes, you know, a couple of observations of PCBs, PAHs, um, and a large array of metals. Some of the metals are believed to be naturally occurring, like arsenic and vanadium, um, at levels that may be above some of the, uh, state standards, but are due just to the presence in minerals. And others... Uh, but are present naturally just in, in naturally occurring minerals. But other contamin, contaminants of concern such as fluoride and hexavalent chromium in specific are associated with some of those, uh, metal working operations that occurred. Uh, and all of these will need to be addressed in some fashion as part of the remedial effort. Yeah, that's probably enough about that. I'm just going to talk a little bit more detail about each of those media, the soil, and then the groundwater and surface water. Um, so this is a, a map, again, out of the PADP's assessment of the alternatives of the general areas where soil remediation is expected to occur or may occur. Some of these areas outlined in the darker blue color are areas that are primarily impacted by chlorinated solvents, and those are pretty well defined. But some of the areas that are outlined in green are associated with different, uh, inorganic chemicals. So that includes fluoride, the chromium, um, as well as a couple of others. It, it excludes some of the compounds that are believed, the chemicals arsenic, vanadium, things like that, that are believed to be natural. But these are still just relatively approximate areas. Uh, for some of the inorganics in particular, there have been recent studies of whether or not hexavalent chromium, rather than trivalent chromium, so the more toxic form of chromium is present. It was known to be present in groundwater, but they hadn't looked for it specifically in soil. There have been some additional studies since. Uh, they came out actually, some of them after this assessment was performed by PADP, and they have observed hexavalent chromium in some soils, at least saturated soils. It may also be present in some of those areas in, in unsaturated soils, but it just hasn't fully been assessed yet. And so that's all stuff that will need to be addressed in the remediation, but aren't, but isn't precisely known at this time. Yeah, if you want to just flip. So I'll just give a quick overview of groundwater, which I, again, I'm sure everybody has seen before. Um, but this is a, a map of the concentrations of TCE that are involved in that very large groundwater plume. The, the very tip of the plume hasn't been fully defined by monitoring wells yet. That's defined by modeling. Um, and, you know, there, there may be additional work done there at some point. But the main point that I wanted to make was that, uh, highlighted in yellow are some of the higher concentrations of TCE. Those are concentrations that may suggest that, um, actual liquid solvent is still present in the subsurface. Um, it's referred to as Dean Apple for dense, non-aqueous liquid. These... Dense, non-aqueous liquid. So, um, you know, these solvents are heavier than water, so they sink to the bottom, the opposite of oil that would flow to the top. Um, and I'll get to that in the next slide. But, uh, the point being that the, the potential source of the groundwater plume has actually extended offsite. It's not just limited to the onsite source areas that are, they're going to be the primary focus of remediation. The hope is that the remedial activities will kind of cut off part of the source, and some of the chemicals involved may, may move with the groundwater flow. Uh, but that's one of the considerations to keep in mind with the remediation. And, and the last point I wanted to make on this slide was with the Little Valley Creek running essentially right through the center of the plume, onsite at least, there is discharge of impacted groundwater into the creek, and that results in levels of TCE, fluoride, chromium, other things in the Little Valley Creek, and that is not acceptable under the clean, clean stream laws. So that's one of the goals, you know, addressing that we'll get to later. If you want to flip to the next slide. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about groundwater, um, in, in more detail because it's under, important to understand the vertical distribution of the, of the groundwater plume, as well as the horizontal distribution, the map that we just saw. Um, and the big point is that because of the specifics of the geology, there's these vertical fractures and the, and the solvent has essentially traveled straight down to a relatively, uh, a relatively significant depth. There's a, I kind of added some notations to this map. It, it's about 400 feet deep, some of the deeper wells. And some of those deeper wells have very high concentrations still because of this vertical movement of the solvents. Um, and I outlined in green the, the area that they're talk, we're talking about the active remediation occurring. So that's the, the soils, the soil, saturated soils, the unsaturated soils, and the, the shallower bedrock, you know, the first 120 feet or so. Um, and that's actually only a small fraction really of the area that, uh, potential source material exists. The, the intention is obviously that by remediating the shallow source material, the shallow portion of the plume at least will retract. Uh, but that's just an important thing to understand about exactly what is being proposed at this time. I'll get to it kind of at the end. But it's still something that PADP feels, requires additional study as to whether or not the deeper bedrock can be remediated at all. The, you know, the RP group has argued that it is not practical, um, and that is, just isn't a decision that's been made yet.
Can I ask a question about that slide?
Yes.
With the orange versus the white?
So, yeah, I should have explained that. So the white represents bedrock, um, and the orange represents soils. So groundwater at the site is present both in, uh, soil, and most of it is in bedrock. And that's really where the, the larger bulk of the plume is observed.
Can I ask, is Bishop Tube where the box is? Like, is this a...
Loosely, yeah, I should have... So the bishop, the Bishop Tube end is the B end, where that, uh, box, the, the green box is shown. So the green box is very roughly where Bishop Tube is. And then as the, you know, the plume travels essentially kind of downhill, as was shown on the map. So the, I'm going to get my left and right wrong if I, if I try to answer, but where the, the green box is essentially Bishop Tube. Um, and the rest of the map is that large offsite plume. Correct. Yeah, and there's a very teeny key map there that you really can't see. All right, next slide if you... Uh, so with that background on what the contaminants are, where they are, I mean, the, the big problem is obviously that people and the environment can be exposed to this, these contaminants and have negative impacts to wildlife, to people. And so this, that kind of cartoon sketch just illustrates some of the exposure routes that can exist. Um, and many of them, really all of them are potential exposure routes here. Some of them have been determined to be potentially significant, um, in the future. The remedial investigation that was performed by the RP group had to evaluate all of these potential, or at least most of these potential exposure pathways under current conditions, but not necessarily under potential future conditions. So the determination from that was that really that there was no unacceptable risk at present, but that use of groundwater or vapor intrusion, which is the, the entrance of these chlorinated solvent vapors, uh, from groundwater moving into the soil and then moving into occupied structures, could be a risk in the future depending on site use or change to existing structures. Um, so since that's one of the more significant exposure pathways here, the map, um, is a map, again, from the existing remedial investigation report from the RP group, um, that shows where evaluations of vapor intrusion have been performed. So in a bunch of, uh, residential properties shown in yellow and a few commercial properties shown in orange, they've gone in actually multiple times, you know, going back 2005 at least, um, and done indoor air sampling to look at the levels of these chlorinated solvents that are present inside these occupied buildings. Um, and a number of those samples have detected TCE. Um, and additional risk assessment was done as part of the RI and determined that there was not a hazard to human health. Um, but TC from this groundwater plume is present inside of occupied structures. And again, that's an important point to understand and really why doing something about, at the very least, the shallow groundwater is, is important in addition to protecting the Little Valley Creek. That's probably enough about that. So I'm going to jump into kind of what PADP looked at and what they decided, and explaining kind of where we are in the remedial process will help set the context. So there's been a long history of site investigation. Uh, after a lot of back and forth over the course of years, a remedial investigation collecting additional data about exactly where everything is onsite and offsite has been, uh, finished. But this remedial selection, which is where PADP is right now, is really just in the middle of the process. So additional remedial design investigations are going to be required to, to pin down a bunch of additional considerations, which I'll, again, I'll get to at the end. Then there's going to be a very specific remedial design, uh, exactly where they're going to be injecting, exactly what chemicals. All that has not been fully defined yet. Then the, you know, there, that design has to be implemented, and that can take a significant amount of time also to, to build things, to demolish existing structures, to put in wells. You know, that could take a couple of years as well. And then through the remediation process, the remediation has to be monitored. You have to measure whether or not it's working as intended and ensure that it doesn't have any negative impacts on, for example, the, the creek running right alongside the site. Um, and then it may be necessary to modify the remedy, whether because it's not working, whether it, it presents risks to the surface water. Um, all these things may need adjustment over time. Um, and so it's not a very satisfactory answer, but this is a quite long process that really is not fully determined at this point. Next slide. Um, so to put PADP's decision in context, I just wanted to spend the time to go through these kind of seemingly esoteric definitions of what they're trying to do. So remedial action objectives is basically what are you trying to accomplish? Um, and both for soil and groundwater, they're basically trying to be protective of human health and the environment as it's defined in the land recycling regulations. You know, there's specific procedures, specific standards, specific ways of looking at risk that are defined in those regulations. For ground, or I'll start with soil, but for soil specifically, they're also trying to prevent migration of contaminants that are present in the soil, either to soil, you know, either offsite in groundwater, um, or to, uh, the Little Valley Creek, prevent it being moved, you know, the third point, prevent movement of contaminated soils by wind or water. For groundwater, in addition to just being protective, they're looking to prevent groundwater contamination from traveling offsite. So by reducing the contamination onsite, less of it is going to be flowing offsite. Prevent discharge of these contaminants to the extent possible to, so that, you know, that's... It's not possible to probably entirely prevent it, which is, I suspect, the, you know, deliberate choice of words, to reduce the flow of COCs to Little Valley Creek, and to speed up the shrinking of that groundwater plume. As you cut off the high concentrations, you know, the lower concentrations, the far out edge of that plume will start to pull back in. Um, and they really didn't specifically define goals for drinking water, which is the third on it. I should have explained operable units to begin with. Um, but they, for the purposes of decisions, decided to split up soil, groundwater, and lastly, the single impacted potable well, um, kind of located in the middle of the plume for the purposes of this remedial decision. And, you know, they're obviously trying to prevent someone from being exposed to that impacted water from the potable well. Next slide.
Can I ask a question about...
Sure. Sure.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're going to identify your...
You're going to have to use the mic.
Oh, okay. Just like, can you go back this slide?
Is that on? Carol Rapp, R-A-P is in Peter. In the second OU2, the first bullet, it says remain closed in accordance with Act Two based... Sorry. Based on the intended land use.
So can you explain that a little further?
So what's going to happen is going to depend on whether it's residential or left alone? So I just have a question about why that's specifically there.
Yeah, that's a very good question, and it's, there's actually kind of multiple levels to the answer to that, but yes. So there, under Act Two, there are a number of different standards that are specified, and those are related to, to land use. So basically, commercial or non-residential and residential land use will have different standards based on the types of exposure that may occur. So a residential property would need to be cleaned up to a higher level because of the possibility of kids eating dirt in large part, but, you know, also simply people being present there potentially 24 hours a day. So for a residential property, there is a higher standard to which cleanup is required under the Act Two process. And then to, to explain that a little bit further, so there is a background standard, things like that arsenic or vanadium that are probably naturally occurring. You go sample somewhere offsite, you see that the same concentration is present, you say, okay, this is natural, I don't need to do anything about it. That's a background standard in, in brief overview. Statewide health standards are basically, there is a number for residential, there is a number for commercial, you, you clean it up to that number, and then it's considered okay. And then the site-specific standard, and that's, and PADP says it in their, in their presentation, although it's not, it's online, although it's not stated in the, you know, in this assessment, that a residential site-specific may be appropriate, you know, that's where you don't quite hit those, some of those numbers. There may be, like in a case like this, groundwater is not completely cleaned up, but you may be able to prevent exposure using some additional measures, you know, so that an obvious example would be installing something like a radon system to prevent exposure to vapors coming into a building. I'm sorry, that was a long answer, but...
Again, if you, we need to have people come up to the microphone, identify their, their name and address, please.
Do you mean my address? She mean my address? Or be mine? May I have a question asked?
Sure, when you're talking into the microphone.
My name is Sarah Caspar. I live in Downingtown.
Could you spell it?
Excuse me?
Could you spell your name?
Sure. Sarah with an H, Caspar, C-A-S-P-A-R. And I live in Downingtown. I'm retired from U.S. EPA, and I'm a chemist and a biologist. And that has something to do with what I'm going to say, but not entirely. It's because as a, working at EPA, my job was to find out the best remediation at sites and to develop it because...
Did I make your map?
Well, that's because what's, we did, in all due respect, these people have worked very hard going over this plan, but there are two really serious flaws. Number one is the lack of chemistry. Number one, TCE, tri-chloroethylene, is what's called a Dean apple. That means it's heavier than water, so when it gets into your water system, whether it's your drinking water, your streams, whatever, it goes plummeting down to great depths, and it sits there, and it sulks. And it may go down farther. We don't know how far this has gone down because nobody has determined what that extent is, either vertically or horizontally. So we don't have a good definition of the extent of contamination, which is what defines the site. It is not just the 13.5 acres. It goes much farther than that. The well that is on Conestoga Road, the plan is to seal it. It should be used as a monitoring well so that you can track from that well progress of the TCE. Secondly, the proposed plans for remediating or attacking, or whatever you want to call it, for the TCE in groundwater, et cetera, is the oxy reduction. And the chemicals that are used in oxy reduction can create more problems rather than less because of what's used, the chemicals used to try to break down these products. I love it because reduction means that you add to it, and oxidation you subtract, and I think that is a wonderful thing, the humor of chemistry, but not everybody appreciates that. Certain other things that are important. Thermal treatment of TCE produces toxic gases, so you don't want to do that. Next, it is more than likely that these forever chemicals called perfluorinated, perfluorinated by, they're perfluorinated carbon compounds, and they are soluble in everything. They're in the air, they're in your soil, and in your groundwater, and nothing stops them. And so we need to know if they're there because what they do is similar to the toxic events that TCE causes, but more. And there is some similar health effects that are present locally that have shown up, which indicate that it may, they may be here too. And if not originally used, they were produced by the acids that were used in the process. So to ignore them is wrong. You cannot, that you just simply cannot. So the end of that, and the most important part, is you cannot ignore the chemistry. And I'm going to quote Mark Twain, who's one of my favorites, and basically what he said was kindness is the language that deaf can hear and blind can see, and this community needs that kindness. They have been suffering through this since noted '81, but it's been going on long before that because this site existed from the 1950s until 1999. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate what you're doing, but keep on going. Some things I am, it's like computers. I'm not good with computers either.
All right, thanks. Thanks for reiterating some of the points that I made, too. That's always good. So those are the overall goals of the remediation according to PADP. And so they're evaluating how those goals are, the methods by which those goals are going to be achieved by a set of evaluation criteria. And again, it seems kind of academic, but it's worth running over because you come in at the end. Obviously, to protect public health and the environment, you know, which is the first point in the, in those goals. Secondly, to have compliance with other applicable requirements, and, you know, the foremost among those is going to be the, you know, the clean streams law, the requirement not to be polluting this exceptional value stream. Then feasibility, can you practically do it? Can you, it be effective? Can it be implemented? And, and is it a permanent solution once it is implemented? So those are just all practical criteria. Is this going to readily work? Then is it going to be cost-effective? You know, if it's just as good and just as practical, they'd prefer the cheaper method since they may eventually pay for some of it. And lastly, and, you know, this is important, community acceptance. You know, there can be methods of remediation that get you the same outcome, but some are simply not acceptable to the community. And, you know, one case, one example would be, say, caping something and leaving it alone. Maybe that would be less acceptable to a community versus completely removing something. So just the point to being that, that everyone's feelings about this subject are part of the equation. Yep, next slide. With that said, I am gonna, I realize that nobody can read this because I tried to read it when I went through in this room last time. We're going to talk about quickly, because, you know, we don't need to spend too much time on the things that PADP didn't select, but quickly go through some of the different remedies that they looked at, and I'm going to talk about soil and groundwater, and then the potable well is pretty easy. But in all of those cases, they looked at the possibility of simply not doing anything. That's kind of a matter of form, and they decided that that was not protective. Even if it was okay at the moment, it wouldn't be protective in the future. And in the case of the potable well, it obviously wouldn't be acceptable at all. For soils, they looked at engineering controls and institutional controls, which is basically tapping it and then putting legal restrictions in place to prevent people from disturbing it or doing other things. That might have been protective of human health, but it wouldn't have been protective of the Little Valley Creek, especially because, again, a lot of that plume is, is not coming from unsaturated soils, but it's all now down in the, in the bedrock and, you know, coming through to the stream. They looked at options for excavation of the soil and then either taking it offsite to a landfill or treating it onsite with chemicals and putting it back in place. And while those might have been protective, they were difficult to implement because, as mentioned in that video, the site access is not good, and also because digging out saturated soils requires capturing that contaminated groundwater in the course of the excavation and having to do something with it, and that can get very expensive very quickly. So finally, the selected remedy was to use some combination of in-situ technologies and to use soil mixing to ensure that those technologies got good contact throughout the, the unconsolidated soils. And that was, you know, both one of the less expensive methods, takes still about four years, about the same amount of time to plan and implement as they expected for excavation, and, you know, was overall equally effective. So that was the, the end result of the alternatives for soil. For groundwater, they looked at monitored natural attenuation, which is essentially doing nothing but watching it. So that was least expensive, but again, they didn't feel that it would be affectatious in that it would take an indefinite amount of time to, to achieve any improvement in the groundwater quality. In situ remediation of groundwater, similar to the in situ remediation of soil, which is what they eventually chose, and that was in situ treatment of the saturated soils and of the shallow bedrock, and we'll get to that in more detail. They also looked at an in situ thermal treatment. You're basically heating up the soils to a pretty high temperature to volatilize off specifically the TCE and other chlorinated solvents. That is both extremely energy intensive, and there is a potential for thermal impacts to the Little, Little Valley Creek because they know groundwater is flowing from shallow groundwater at the site, what they're trying to treat directly into the Little Valley Creek. And they also looked at hydraulic control, basically pumping groundwater, treating it at the surface and reinjecting it. That's both very expensive and tends to be not very effective in removing the bulk of the contaminant mass, so it's essentially something that goes on forever. As I said, the end result was similar in situ technology as the, as of the soil. And they looked at continuing the existing, for this one potable well, continuing the existing point-of-use treatment system. They basically run it through carbon and remove the solvents, and people use, then use that treated water. They decided it would be both cheaper and more permanent to simply put them on municipal I think that's everything. Did I miss anything important, Tony? Tony is, I should say, our expert on remediation. I am a chemist and geochemist, and Tony is, has got the remediation part down, so, all right, excellent. I'm doing good. Next slide, please.
Next slide.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Can, can I, at this point in time, we're gonna, we're gonna allow these folks to go through the whole slide, if you don't mind?
I'm almost done if that helps.
And remember that question?
Do you have a question? I'm a geogeochemist.
Yes, yes, my background is in, I see, geochemistry and tracer hydrology.
And then if we can answer all the questions following the slide, that'll be, that'll be great.
We'll be here till four o'clock, so that's no problem. All right, so, again, another slide, nobody can read, but I'll go through it all. And this is just a little bit higher level of detail on those selected remedies.
They're selected what?
Oh, the remedies that PADP selected for soil, groundwater, and the potable well. And the punchline of this, to get ahead of myself, is really that this is an outline of the selected remedies. It's not, it's not a great amount of detail, but it gives you enough to, to generally understand what's going to happen. So for soils, they're planning to treat both saturated and unsaturated soils with a range of potential additives, and they have not specified what exactly those additives will be. In situ chemical oxidation would be adding an oxidant to directly break down some of these chemicals that are present. In situ reduction would be adding something that's a reductant, something like zerovalent iron, basically, something like iron filings that would also have the chemical effect of breaking down some of these chlorinated solvents and a secondary effect of immobilizing some of the inorganic constituents by a variety of processes that I probably shouldn't get But, you know, they held out the possibility that some of, could even be soil stabilization that maybe was more covered in some of the previous reports that the consultant for PADP did. And an important point in this remediation is the use of soil mixing, so essentially just a very large auger would be used to ensure that the chemicals are mixed evenly throughout the soil because in that treatability study that was done back in 2015, they just didn't really get good effects, and part of that was, they hypothesized at least, that the injected chemicals were essentially going through the soil column and into the bedrock without really having much of an impact on the unconsolidated saturated soils. So this would take a relatively extended period of time. It might be a year of planning, a year to implement it, and then a couple of years of post-remedial monitoring to essentially see whether it worked. In, really, for all of these remedial options, both soil and groundwater, there's still, as I said, a lot of additional work to be done with respect to pre-design investigation, then coming up with a very specific remedial design, monitoring the remedy, making adjustments, and they, you know, speaking of, to groundwater now, they have kind of an extensive list, even more extensive list, I should say, of potential amendments that they may use as... even more extensive list, I should say, of potential amendments that they may use as part of the groundwater remediation. Oxidants, reductants, but also they may try to enhance the natural breakdown of these chlorinated solvents by bacteria. So they could be adding bacterial cultures, they could be adding nutrients, they could be adding micronutrients and enzymes. There's a lot of things that they could do to try to stimulate the degrade, the naturally occurring degradation of these chlorinated solvents. You know, and that would be, for groundwater, again, a relatively extended process and might require adjustments. They specifically contemplate that they would start with the, the soils themselves and see whether they get good contact with the shallow bedrock by simply injecting things into the soil and, and letting it flow naturally into the bedrock, or they may do additional injections directly into the bedrock to try to distribute these materials. And that process of doing that, monitoring, making adjustments, may take seven years and is really focused, again, onsite and in the major areas where those chlorin, two really of the three major areas where chlorinated solvents are observed in soil. And really that-
I'm sorry, chlorinated solvents or-
Oh, they would be focusing on two major areas where chlorinated solvents are observed in soil and observed in groundwater at the highest concentrations. And lastly, there's a couple of additional requirements that would be specific to soil and groundwater. You know, to treat the soils, they would need to demolish the existing buildings because they would need to have access for these very large pieces of equipment for the injection and for the soil mixing. Once that was done, there would probably some site restoration that would be involved that, you know, those remedial areas would be highly disturbed and they'd need to be graded and stabilized. And then, you know, as a last step, specifically for groundwater, at the end of whatever period of remedial injections, you know, seven years was just kind of a possibility that was thrown out in their assessment. They would be transitioning to the monitored natural attenuation, again, simply watching it as nature takes its course. And the, you know, the, the drinking water is again, pretty self-explanatory. They're just going to put that, that one well on city water. I think that's good enough. All right, well, 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 anything that I missed, we'll cover in the questions, I'm sure, so. So second to last slide, I promise, but again, wanted to talk in a little bit more detail about what's not known. Because it's kind of buried in PADP's alternatives assessment, but they enumerate a bunch of things that will need to be part of these pre-remedial design investigations. And those are some significant questions that still have to be answered so that they can be addressed in the specific design. So for soil, the presence of hexavalent chromium is one of them. There has been some additional assessment that has detected hexavalent chromium in soil, but it's not present in some of those other inorganic constituent areas that may, and so the areas where it is present may need some additional remediation to, to try to, to reduce that or to simply reduce its mobility. Fluoride is again, present in groundwater at significant concentrations. They've recently done some additional assessment of whether it's present in soil at levels that may continue to add to the groundwater plume, but there may be some work that's additionally needed there. And they also need to just prove that the metals that they say are naturally occurring are naturally occurring. For groundwater, there are actually some, maybe even more significant points that need to be figured out. So again, as with soil, kind of exactly where they're injecting the chemicals, exactly what chemicals they're injecting are an important point. But they also have to figure out exactly what measures are required to prevent any of these groundwater injections having, from having a negative impact on the Little Valley Creek. And so that is really not addressed, other than that it, identifying it as something that needs to be addressed in this, this assessment, but it's one point that bears watching essentially. Another important point is that point about the deep bedrock. So currently, there is no remedy specifically addressing the deep bedrock, although the shallow bedrock may spread to the deep bedrock to some extent. And that's something that PAD specifically called out as needing additional evaluation, whether it's, or not it's practical to, to remediate the deep bedrock. And you know, most of the groundwater plume is in the deep bedrock. The, the theory behind it not being so important, and it's just a theory, is that the, the number of fractures and the connectivity of the fractures decreases the deeper you go. The hydraulic conductivity decreases, so essentially the plume isn't moving as fast the deeper you go. But again-
I'm sorry, I was trying to-
Oh, the, the groundwater plume is not moving as quickly at greater depth compared to at shallower depth, where there are more fractures, it's just more permeable. And that's one of the reasons you may be a little less concerned with the deep bedrock plume, but it's also extremely large and it's a significant fraction. I haven't done the calculation, but it's probably a significant fraction of the total mass. So that's another important, important point yet to be determined. There's some additional sampling of other COCs in groundwater. They did identify one for dioxane, another emerging contaminant along with PFOS as present in some of the recently completed sampling. You know, they didn't seem to see it all off-site, but it is present at least onsite. And they need to do similar, some additional evaluation of inorganics presence in groundwater as well. So there's, there's a bunch of things that they're still working on, and PADP simply isn't satisfied yet have been fully addressed. Slip to the next slide. So the next steps are that they're going to be accepting comments through the end of January, and they're then going to respond to those comments and make a final statement. And then it's going to be, the responsibility of the responsible parties to start implementing that remedy with PADP oversight. It's going to be a significant process over a significant number of years, and there may be adjustment along the way. So I'll just say that it's important to follow along with those details as they develop and continue to have input. That's, that's kind of our overview, so we'd be happy to field questions.
Prior, prior to those questions, I want to add a comment or two pertaining to our response on the video, as well as the, to remind people, it's been a while, probably back in April, that we ended up having the preliminary approval for this project, and we had 14 conditions that we required the builder to meet before any development would occur. And I'd like to read some of the specific ones pertaining to DEP. Some of them pertain to land development, which are relevant for this meeting, but I will read a few of these pertaining to DEP and this discussion. "The applicant shall implement the remedial scope of work developed by environmental standards, as may be amended, and approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, including remediating all unsaturated soils with any concentration of TEC above Act II residential standards in the three identified soil hotspot areas of concern, and securing approval from DEP for the unsaturated soils in these three hotspot areas of concern to the satisfaction of DEP. In addition to meeting all the requirements of the applicant set forth in the March 17, 2005 consent order and agreement, as amended or may be amended between DEP and the applicant, and in any remediation scope of work developed by or behalf of the applicant for the property and approved by DEP. Another area is no earth disturbance, construction, or redevelopment activities other than building or demolition activities shall occur at the three soil hotspot areas of concern until the completion of all necessary soil value excavation required at the three hotspot areas in accordance with DEP-approved remediation scope of work may be amended. In addition to securing DEP's approval for the unsaturated soils in the three soil hotspot areas of concern, the applicant shall obtain written confirmation from DEP that soil hotspot remediation was completed in accordance with DEP-approved remediation scope of work, as may be amended. The installation of vapor migration systems on any residential structures located within 100 feet of groundwater with volatile organic concentrations in excess of Act II residential statewide health standards. The applicant shall obtain a stormwater construction NPDES permit from the Chester County Conservation District. There shall be reasonable future access granted to DEP and the PRPs to monitor groundwater wells and to, and to implement any future groundwater remedy that may be selected by There shall be recoordination of environmental covenant pursuant to the Uniform Environmental Covenants Act, requiring residents to operate and maintain the vapor-migration systems in perpetuity. The request to operate and maintain the systems will also be contained within the HOA documents." "The applicant must remediate the soils in the three soil hotspot areas identified by DEP. The remediation must be to the residential statewide health standards for soil and address the related vapor mitigation issues through pathway elimination. The applicant shall submit a report for DEP approval demonstrating remediation of the unsaturated soils in these three soil hotspot areas of concerns as set forth. Until the remediation of the three soil hotspot areas is fully completed, which shall include post-excavation samples and approval of the remediation by DEP, the applicant shall not start the construction of any residential units on the property. The only permitted activity during this time shall be the installation of temporary roads to support the remediation process. The applicant shall submit a demolition plan to the township and DEP prior to the demolition of any structures on the property." Those are the main points pertaining to the conditions that we put onto the approval, preliminary approval for this development. Again, that was some time ago, just wanted to reiterate those points. Thank you. I guess we'll, we'll move on to the next, to the Q and A period.
Right.
Yep.
Larry Stauffer, 54 Fonstock Road. It's pretty much related to what you just read.
I'm sorry, S-T-A-U-F-F-E-R. Fonstock?
Yeah, Fonstock Road. I'm an electrician. Our codes change yearly, or, so if I put in a permit, and I guess my point is, is that reading, listening to the plans for this cleanup action, it's going to take four to seven years. So somebody put in an application for a building structure, for a residential building structure, and four to seven years, the codes are going to change, right? Possibly?
You mean, the building goes four structures?
Yeah.
Or hang?
I mean, yeah, I mean, we, there's, there's things that, I mean, so I'm just kind of confused of, and this really doesn't, I'm more of the supervisor's question of how the process work. That, you know, if, if I put in a plan for electrical project and seven years from now, you know, that plan's not going to be any good. Know what I mean? Just, just a curiosity question.
Approved plan is only due for five years, right?
Five years. So then he would have to, he'd have to start all over again.
That's the land development plan as applied to zoning, kind of, because you're talking about more building plan.
Yeah.
No building permit would be, would be acceptable.
All right, so this is just land use.
All done.
And then, just a quick question on the, there's a lot of unknowns with these, this DEP plan. So the, the chemicals that they potentially would use to try to break down all that, are you going to get information about what chemicals are being used? Because you inject stuff in the ground, doesn't it eventually get into the drinking water of the public supply? I know that the Aqua filters it and all that, but isn't that kind of eventually, we're all drinking water that comes out of the ground?
Yeah, and those-
My concern would be putting bacteria in there and chemicals and, we don't know. I mean, it just, it seems like, you know, I know that, that leaving the slate alone is not the best idea, but because it's still putting out contamination. But it's been that way for twenty-some years, so we're, you know, I know, this is a tough, this is just a really tough site. Really, to come up with cleanup action and to have the public be okay with it.
Sure, sure. And it, the specific chemicals will be specified in work plans essentially later in the process. And certainly, there would be opportunity to say something about those selections, but typically, the materials selected are, I wouldn't say innocuous, since, since some of them are reactive, but they are selected to be non-hazardous when injected into the subsurface, and there is a specific permitting process for injection, for exactly the reasons you're talking about, injecting anything into the subsurface. The pilot test they did in 2015 was essentially food-grade molyasses, and that's certainly one of the opt-
It'd be okay.
Uh, food-grade molyasses.
Food-grade molyasses?
Molyasses, you know, blackstrap molyasses, you know, and, or, or pure iron filings, for example, is another, you know, so they, that is a valid concern, but there are at least processes that are supposed, and I, you definitely watch what they're going to be injecting, but there are processes in place to try to control those risks.
Yeah, and your, your question on the bacteria as well, there are naturally occurring bacteria in the ground that will degrade this stuff, so sometimes they'll, they'll try and enhance it, possibly. The bacteria have to be a specific bacteria, or there's cultures that'll inoculate into the subsurface as well to do that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, can I, actually, can I bring somebody in first who's saying they need to leave in five minutes? I'm sorry, and he's been waiting too, online. Okay, Steve Schmid, you can unmute yourself, please.
Hello, thank you very much. My question really just, to reiterate what we heard from the BSTI fellows from, from NIC today about the thoroughness or lack thereof of the DEP plan of proposed remediation. My question is, will the BSTI recommendation to the East Whiteland Supervisors state that the proposed remedies are- the proposed remedies are incomplete by virtue of the examples you gave noting what is missing? That's one question. Maybe you'd like to answer that?
Sure, I'll just say that it might not be fair to characterize it as incomplete, it's just they haven't gotten to that level of specificity yet. And it can, as I outlined, it can be a pretty complicated process to get to that level of specificity. So, I mean, I think that's something that may be a valid concern to mention, that the plan is just an outline, but I don't think anyone really expected them to have all of the details worked out. That's kind of just, they don't get to that level of detail when they make this type of remedial decision. It's about the broad technological approach.
So then, as a community, I'm assuming we should note that it is difficult to remedy a thumbs up or thumbs down on the scope of the plan without it being technically complete at this point. So I would assume what, as a community, we will do is say it is difficult for us to endorse the plan because there are holes in the plan. That's basically just a statement.
I mean, I think that's fair.
Okay. And then the second point that, as you heard some of my neighbors say, we're extremely concerned and about the potential for residential construction on the site, and if residential construction were to somehow proceed on the site, is the proposed DEP remedy that we've all read, or some of us have read, sufficient to allow residential construction? Or does it go far enough? In other words, should it be more stringent and therefore more costly for the PRPs to satisfy?
Yeah, in some respects, that's impossible to completely answer because we won't know the outcomes of this remediation till five years from now, when it's, I think we can say that it's a valid technological approach and that it could reach remedial standards, at least for soils, for TCE in specific. The groundwater issue because of the deep bedrock impacts is something that will be difficult to, or perhaps impossible to remediate completely. So there would, there will inevitably be some additional requirements like restrictions on groundwater use, those things that are called pathway elimination to prevent exposure if there were a residential use for the property, like the vapor mitigation system that was just mentioned. You know, I think that is inevitable because I can almost guarantee that the entire site's groundwater is not going to be remediated to residential statewide health standards, at least not for $8 million.
And so my final question on that point is, if this remediation process were to begin with an idea that it had to be clean to residential standards because that's what it's approved for at the moment, does the DEP consider the possibility of modifying the cleanup process? And therefore, does the DEP retain either through money's escrowed initially from the PRPs, or wherever they get it from? Or do they have the right to go back to the responsible parties and request or demand additional funding for adequate cleanup?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, so the budgetary numbers that are thrown around in this are for decision-making purposes, they're not a budget. So, you know, they could spend twice that much if they can, they can, if they can do so, essentially. I can't speculate too much about the funding source or the relationship with the RP group. But yes, they certainly have the ability to adapt the, and they envision that in the assessment that they provide, the remediation procedures and technologies as they go. And, yes, and I'll say, you know, that they are, I suspect, envisioning as an end goal a residential site-specific standard, so that means additional steps are still required to prevent exposure. That's what I think they're aiming for with this remedial approach.
Okay, and then just to put a fine point on that, as they get into the cleanup process, is it your experience that these DEP agreements reached with PRPs have a potential future subsequent claim on PRPs for additional capital to remediate the problem? Or is that something as the public, we should make sure is put in the document if a residential standard is going to be aimed for? The claim for additional funding that DEP would enforce?
Yeah, I mean, PADP is essentially in charge of these remedial decisions in this, you know, state superfund program essentially, so they do have that ability to simply ask for more. Somebody still has to write a check, but...
Their agreement has the force of law behind it to demand that, doesn't it?
I mean, yeah, there are enforcement options. Again, I don't want to speak out of my hydrogeology lane and stray into legal territory.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, come on up, again to the microphone, please. If you can use the microphone.
I forgot about that. Going back.
Say your name again.
Okay, Sarah Caspar, Downingtown. Hydrogeology, there is a site down the road called Chemclean, which has the same problem that it has TCE, but the difference is the hydrogeology of the area.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, is that better?
But the difference is what?
The hydrogeology.
Okay.
The area where Chemclean is, is all one type of topography. We are dealing with at least two types, which makes it much more complicated for the hydrogeologists to figure out what to do, and it also makes it much more difficult to come up with a solution. Which then is going to bring me up to my pet peeve, which is Act Two. Act Two is under Pennsylvania authority, DEP, and its authority is so limited that it can't do what is being done at Chemclean, which is under EPA authority, which is CIRCLA, which is superfund.
Which is what?
CIRCLA, that's superfund. And superfund has the authority to deal with your drinking water. And that was what happened there, where the drinking water at a community was contaminated. But the second thing is, is that the topography is all the same, and it's all karst, which is limestone. And so, back when I was involved with the site, it was critical, it got the attention of EPA, partly through REPRO, which was what I was working with, but partly because it's right across from Great Valley School, and we don't want to contaminate the water for the kids. Good point. There is no authority under Pennsylvania's regulations that deals with that. They can deal with Clean Streams Act, and that's it, because that's what's been delegated to them by the Federals. And it's very limiting. When I worked on Chemclean, we had Ron Sloto was advising us, and he's written the book for Chester Valley. And, so I hope you've used that book because it also deals with the topography of this area too. But it is just really difficult, and I don't think that DEP is able to deal with it because it's not, it doesn't have enough authority to deal with the issues at hand, and they're big. There is going to be contamination of water downstream, and you don't know how much it's going to be, but the TCE, and if there's PFAS there too, it's going to seep through all the fissures in the rock and go right on down into the valley. And that's the way it's going to be, unless you can bring in another authority that is going to help do a more serious action here. And that's really all I have to say. It's nothing against what you're saying, you're doing your best with what you have at hand to deal with. You both are. But you're limited with what is given you, what the gift is, and it's a very poor gift. The people that I worked with, with DEP at my sites, they hated Act Two because it strangled them. They couldn't do what they thought needed to be done, and that's, I think that keeps on happening over and over. It's really frustrating. So that's it. That's it. That's my little rant. Thanks.
Thank you.
Deb, you want to come up?
Just give it to Debbie. The shortest one in the room.
Thank you. Deborah Mobile, 42 Village Way, Malvern. You'll have to excuse me, I usually kind of try to write down what I say as I go along, and I have scribbled all over this page. I understand that this is a scientific process, and I understand that we need to test and move forward, and test and move forward. I get that. I, believe it or not, I was a school psychologist for part of my career, and I get that, testing, we don't know all the answers, but we keep working. Okay? But you said something, like, to the effect of, I don't think anybody expected that we'd have a, I did. I expected a plan. It's 21 years they've been working on this, and I expected a plan with some answers. I at least expected a plan that said, well, if A happened, we're going to do A, B, and C, and then depending on how C reacts, then we're going to move on to either D or E. I need a framework. I also need a framework to know, is this process of us meeting here, I mean, are you going to go on like a temporary, like they do with lawyer stipend for the township? Because if we have to meet like this for the approval of every single thing that they stick in the ground at every time they want to move someone, and who's going to make that decision to meet to approve? Because you just told me that the responsible parties are going to do this. And you wrote a contract that said that they have to meet, that they have to be in accordance with DEP, but DEP is not who's doing the work. So who's going to come back to the township and say, we have to have another meeting because we have to let all of the people and constituents? By God, by the time that process is done, I'm going to be dead. You know? I mean, and not that I don't expect other younger people to pick up, but this, this could go on indefinitely. And I am very disappointed. There are too many unknowns, and they've made this real, they say they want public input, but they've made this really too complicated for the average person who was a public school teacher, you know? I'm well-educated, but I don't get it. I don't get most of it. So I have to turn to the experts, and I have to turn to you. And can you, can you tell me, put yourself in my shoes, okay? You live three or four blocks from Bishop Two, in a very modest home, okay? You know, compared to where Chemclean is, it's a whole different ballgame in terms of what some of the housing looks like. We're very modest, okay? Lived here, retiring here, you know, what would you say? Would you think that you're getting a good deal on this? Would you say that, as a citizen, would you say that you have enough? How do you feel about it?
I mean, that's obviously a difficult question. I certainly understand that the history dating back to the 80s kind of speaks for itself in that respect. You know, everyone, I think, would have liked to see action a whole lot quicker. There are certainly...
But are you secure, are you secure with the proposed action? Do you think that they have enough information to actually start? Or do you think that we as a township need to stand up and say, there's something wrong here? Everything we see says, you need more information here, you need more information here, you need more here. I mean, it doesn't even sound like me, like they're ready to start.
And I don't have a good answer for, and maybe Tony will jump in, but as to why they did not narrow down the options a little bit, because it, you're basically talking of polar opposites if you're saying oxidation or reduction, and you can't really effectively combine the two, although maybe some very specific circumstances you can. So I will say that I'm a little surprised by that, and, you know, the PADP's own consultant has maybe boiled things down a little bit more in some of their scoping documents where they looked pretty exclusively at reductant technologies, and that is, you know, is probably the way that this would have to go, to try to have compatibility between the soil and the groundwater options?
But you just said probably.
No.
You should be able to read the document and say, this is the way they're headed. And I understand if they run into problems and they have to come back to us. I'm sorry, did you, I interrupted you, I think, on the end, Tony, is it?
Yes.
I thought you wanted to add something too. You looked like you were...
Well, the same thing Nick just said, and this is something that, you know, we need the DEP to address is, same thing Nick said, they said ISCO, ISCR, or bioremediation.
I'm sorry.
In situ chemical oxidation, or in situ chemical reduction, bioremediation, but they didn't prescribe exactly what that is yet. So what is that process? What chemicals are they planning to use? Are they going, again, addressing your concerns, are they going oxidative versus reductive? Because many different things can happen along the process. So that is definitely a valid concern we all have, is what, yes, you're choosing this type of in situ remedy, but what type of in situ remedy? There's a bunch of different combinations.
So I think there's a pretty clear feeling in the room from many of us, if not all of us, that this is quite inadequate. And I understand, you still have more to go over, you have documents, you have to do your science thing, you guys are going to come up with a more comprehensive answer and suggestions. I am very concerned with the way the process works long-term. I am very concerned about who is held responsible for making further adjustments and letting the community know. I am very, you know, I am not a whiny person. I don't, I don't come and complain, I want to work to find solutions. If I don't like your solutions, yes, you will hear about it. But the fact that I'm whining because there is no solution for four years now is kind of starting to get to me. So I think that there needs to be not only more information in plan, but more, more ways to make sure or secure that they're not just doing whatever they choose without the township and the citizenry able to come back and say, wait a minute, we don't like these changes, and this isn't what we agreed to. And again, that's going to cost us even more money because we're going to have to hire more consultants unless we put all environmental people on the supervisors' board, unless all three of you become environmentalists, we're going to have to continue to have these consultants. Another thing that I did not hear addressed at all is I continue to be very concerned about the adequate safety measures when they go in and do the actual work. Who's in charge and who monitors that? Who's in charge and who monitors them? Because every person who works on that ground has a stake, and all of their stakes are different than the citizens that live around, that live in the plume and live next to the site, and the businesses that live along the site. Because along Route 30, those are businesses. I think you saw Rhonda in the film. She's not the only business there along Route 30. So we're talking citizenry and business. When you start to dig that up, when you dig that, when you dig anything up, dust comes in the air. I was in that neighborhood when it was evacuated, twice, in the 80s, because of stuff flying in the air, okay? You know? And stuff flies in the air, and just to let you know, the way the wind patterns go, it comes right down Village Way, and then it goes right up the hill to Malvern. It actually travels up the side of the Great Valley. Generally, that's what happens. You know? Was there anything in here that made you feel comfortable that they are going to have those adequate safety measures in place to protect the neighborhoods, the people who live in the plume, the rest of East Whiteland Township, the Little Valley Creek, while the cleanup is actually going on? Because that needs to be something, that needs to be handled as well. Because that affects all of East Whiteland, both residential and business, because, you know, the different directions that it will flow.
Yep. And I wrote that down, to make sure we capture that. So no, nothing was quite stated in the plan that I know of, from what we read of the administrative record. The video from the DEP, they mentioned it about capturing vapors during the process. Now, it's early on in the process until they have the full remedial design. That's where it comes into play, perimeter air monitoring plans, which we need to make sure are in place. So it's monitoring, yeah, 20 years ago, they didn't have to do it. Now, every site, you have to. There's a plan that goes in place, so we'll need to make sure that they are monitoring for dust and VOCs, and that they are putting in preventative measures to, in the first place, capturing those vapors, depending on the type of technology they're doing. That soil mixing? Yes, they're going to have to capture vapor somehow, or prevent them from migrating off-site. I've seen tents put up before.
Even taking the buildings down?
Yes.
Even taking the buildings down before they get started? And that is considered by the contract, not really part of the whole cleanup thing? That was like a separate issue? You know? And you say, "We're going to have to." Who is that? That's the second part of that. Who is it that is going to have to make sure?
Well, in our experience, that's typically the responsible parties doing the work on the site. The construction crews.
Mm-hmm.
They, what we need to request...
PADD should be making sure that is written into the plan.
Yes.
Just, for example, that ancient environmental standards work plan for excavation had VOC monitoring and dust monitoring as part of the plan. Any plan that the RP group puts together should have that. And then it essentially firstly falls to PADD, and secondly to anyone in the neighborhood to make sure that that actually occurs the way it is specified in the plan.
Yeah. Because it definitely has to be in there, and it has to be in writing, and it has to be monitored outside the group, because the group has a stake in this. Everybody has a stake in this, and what I'm saying, monetary, you know? Not cost-effective, taking the cheapest plan. Again, I was a public school teacher for over 35-some years. I worked in the public schools. School districts have a tendency to go with the lowest bid, and every time, they end up paying for it. I've been in buildings that have sunk. I've been in buildings that had massive amounts of, so much mold, they had to bring in OSHA, and they were only five years old. You know, HBP systems that had to be replaced 10 years after the school was built. So going at the lowest bid, everybody's got, when everybody's got money involved, everybody wants to chintz on it. And everybody in there, the DEP doesn't want to spend the money, the responsible parties don't want to spend the money, the owner of the property, the builder, who I understand is a responsible party now, because he validated the agreement, so that makes him a responsible party. He just wants to get it up clean, fast, and build on it. He don't want to spend any money at all. He wants to make money. So, you know, the only people that aren't making any money off this are the citizens of East Whiteland, and they're the ones that are going to have to be concerned and monitor this. And it has to be in writing, if it's ever going to be monitored, or bowled. Thank you. I'm starting to ramble now. Thank you.
Deb, could you, could you give that to...
Oh, to Sarah.
Passing on?
It may be easier.
DEP is responsible for the oversight every damn day that work is being done, and that is the law. So there is no if, what, and, or buts. That's what they must do, and they must be responsible about it. And if they're not, they're going to be kicked out of here, and we're going to sue the hell out of them. That's Sarah Casper's end.
Okay. I'm going to take a call, a call-in question right now.
Okay.
Okay, so Carol, she's been waiting patiently. Carol Armstrong, could you please unmute yourself? Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for this opportunity to look to the supervisors to protect our environmental rights under the Pennsylvania State Constitution, which we have a responsibility to do. I have a few questions, and I'm going to put them out one by one. The first one is asking for some clarification about some messaging that has been inconsistent, so, and therefore making the assumptions and intentions of everyone unclear. So the first is that in the DEP's material, they have recognized the risks to humans, the risks to homes, the risks to businesses from the contaminants at Bishop Tube, and they have said clearly that they consider the site unsuitable to residential homes. And yet, the DEP is, you all are discussing, selecting remediation methods that are aimed at that establishment of houses there. I don't know whether that involves capping or not, and I'm going to get to that question Let's see. Also, while I'm blanking on my other, there was another very inconsistent message, but could you clarify that question? Perhaps the bestie could clarify that question, why the DEP has said that it's unsuitable for homes, and yet the standards being selected are for that purpose?
Well, I guess I can't speak to specifically what they may have said about it being unsuitable for residential use, but the, I can say that the standards that are applicable to residential versus non-residential use are not worlds apart. So while it's, I think, very beneficial to have the end use known before you undertake remediation, you're trying to get to the best level you can, and it's really a question of when you can stop more, sometimes at least, more than it is in the approach that you choose for residential versus non-residential. At least in a tight case like this, where active remediation is required, you're going to do something, you're going to see how it goes, you're going to assess whether it reached the necessary endpoints, and then do more if it hasn't. And that may mean you stop earlier if it's a non-residential use, but it may still be the overall same approach, if that helps. And I can add that although it was not specified in this assessment of all the alternatives, the budgetary numbers that they used, some of which were, you know, produced by PADD's consultant, did include a small cap over the treated areas by soil mixing, not over the entire site. You know, if that helps with your second question.
Yeah, thank you. I'm still going to punt that one down a little bit, if that's, well, all right, so that I don't forget to ask it. So my question was indeed about if a choice is made at some point to clean up to the highest legal and scientific standards possible, and then do something with the site, and that choice has been to renaturalize it and create undeveloped, at that point, natural space for a community who's at, you know, risk of environmental injustice. I mean, this community is an environmental injustice community in the sense that their health is being put at risk. And they, also, it's also, Bishop Tube is under a mile and a half away from DEP-recognized environmental justice locations. And if you look at that mapping of those areas, you see that there, in fact, isn't a lot of green space around there. So there'd be great benefit and a lot of reason to turn it into natural space. And so I was wondering if capping, if any of these solutions are more conducive to capping, or rather, more intended for capping, and if it were capped, whether it could be reforested?
Yeah. So I would say that the remedy that they selected would be a reasonable approach for both a residential and an open space endpoint. For a residential endpoint, definitely additional steps would be required, as we discussed, vapor mitigation, if a building were to be built there, is almost inevitably going to be required, and is now required as part of that approval that was discussed. So capping, I don't know if you want to say something in addition to Tony?
And let me just clarify. I'm asking specifically about reforestation, not just creating some green space.
Yeah. I don't think that there's anything preventing it. Certainly, reforestation can be a part of, and maybe it was even discussed at one point, a part of mitigating VOC flow to surface water bodies. You know, so I don't think there's anything about the remedies that have been discussed. Nothing currently proposed will involve an impermeable cap that would prevent forestation of the site, if that helps, if that was the question.
Thank you. And I remembered what the other inconsistency was that was confusing to me. Wasn't confusing before I came into this meeting, but it's become confusing.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. The DEP's video reported on the various alternatives for each of the three, you know, target, you know, surface water soils and groundwater, that these were the ones that they were recommending, but that's not the words you're using. You're using that they selected these methods.
Um...
In other words, I'm sorry, so the video says, "These are the ones we're recommending. We're going to consider various things. We want your input. We want the community's input."
Sure.
Community input is very important to the choices we make, but you're saying they've chosen already, before they had the community...
Yeah, they have not made a final decision. Those are their preferred, selected recommendations. Yeah. If I use too strong language, that was not intentional. You know, their recommendations are these remedial approaches, as you say.
Okay. And I'm asking you questions I need to ask DEP as to why they would kind of have decided to get a hearing, so. So another question I have that is for you, though, is, so the in situ method that is relevant to human health risk standard, the standard versus the statewide health standard and versus the background standard, which of those is going to, which of those standards is most sensitive to the toxic effects of the contaminants?
So the statewide health standard is, in general, the most restrictive. So the lowest standards being met in, you know, in all cases would be compliance with the statewide health standard. And that is possible, you know, but I would perhaps say a little unlikely at this site.
Because...
Because of the variety of contaminants of concern present, and the relatively high levels of TC, especially in groundwater, and in, you know, deep fractured bedrock, it's extremely challenging to remediate, and it would be almost impossible, I would say, to truly remediate groundwater at this entire site to statewide health standards, you know, to go from 100,000 parts per billion to less than five. So, you know, that's probably not going to happen, and that's why a site-specific residential standard, or site-specific non-residential standard is the likely outcome.
And where's the background standard in this?
The background standard only applies essentially to metals, which are naturally occurring, so you can just demonstrate that they're naturally occurring and present off-site as well, and then you essentially ignore them in your remediation.
Okay, thank you. But there are some metals there, aren't there? Aren't there...
Yes. So in addition to presumably naturally occurring metals, there are metals that were associated with the site operations as well.
But they would be cleaned up to the in situ health risk...
Right. So the in situ remediation would need to address those metals as well.
Okay, thank you. There's another question, I think it's my last one. Forgive me for a second here. Yeah, I think the capping may have been my last question, so if you just bear with me for a second, because it took a long time for me to get my place in line, so. I guess, no, I do have a general question, I don't know if you could, well, no, I think it's a valid question. So when people were asking you today about what, kind of, trying to get a sense of how toxic these reductant chemicals were, and other chemicals that were going to be used to stabilize and detoxify the materials, you gave some examples that, you know, sounded very, like they were not very toxic. But nevertheless, I have to ask the question, would, could, since you don't know all the chemicals that are going to be used, could some of these chemicals, though, or the ones that you think are probably going to be needed, could they be impacting the fish and other aquatic life in the stream, the forest wildlife, and other flora that are in the, you know, Little Valley Creek and the riparian areas, and the forest, you know?
Yes, I would say that definitely is a possibility, and it's specifically highlighted as something that needs to be studied further in the PADD's assessment, because they know that shallow groundwater discharges to the Little Valley Creek, and so that may preclude using some of these in situ methods in at least the area of concern that's closest to the creek.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I remembered what is my last question now, which is that the DEP gave the relative costs of everything but the no-action alternatives for groundwater. This was the most expensive area, groundwater, am I right? Most expensive remediation area is ground?
Potentially, at least. At least in the range, I would say, so those were some of the highest possible numbers.
Right. So for both soil, actually, for both soils and groundwater. So, but if, as you're describing, and that's been alarming everyone, how much unknown there is as to how much testing will have to be done to find the best detoxifiers, methods of detoxifying, areas for detoxifying, extent of it, and so on, isn't it possible that that alternative that they're selecting, which is kind of, you know, somewhere between the least and the most expensive, might end up being as expensive as the alternatives that require basically removing the toxins? Couldn't it end up really inflating a great deal and reaching, you know, becoming just as expensive?
I think that's always a possibility. These are reasonable estimates from our general experience, but that's not to say that costs don't regularly increase once the specifics are known, and they, you know, actually, the plan meets reality. So I think that's a perfectly valid point, that, you know, the budgets really aren't known until work begins.
But I think you, I heard you say earlier that if it, if more budget is needed to accomplish the... accomplish the end standards of cleanup, that it would be DEP's responsibility to corral that money?
Right, right. These are, these numbers are just for comparison purposes. They're not a budget and they're not a bill that the RP group is getting. It's just for decision-making purposes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't get an incomplete job done because we've exceeded the estimates or something like that.
No, but that's a valid concern.
A valid but unnecessary one?
No, it's never, it's never unnecessary to worry about money.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
I just have a quick question about something that you said, or I need to put understanding. Am I correct in that this plan does not meet the state health standards? We're going for something lower than that?
So the plan will need to meet the requirements for protection of human health under Act II. So that can mean achieving a numeric end goal, which is the statewide health standards, or it can mean achieving less than that goal, but putting other measures in place to be protective of human health. So if groundwater can't be cleaned up completely, you can put a vapor mitigation system in a building to prevent someone from being exposed to the vapors. And that would be compliant with a site-specific standard.
Okay. In the air.
All right, well, that's, yeah.
That's exactly.
Also a valid point. Maya?
Maya Van Rossum, M-A-Y-A-V-A-N-R-O-S-S-U-M, Delaware Riverkeeper. So the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, our members of the community. So I just, I just want to say that we think that the proposal is unacceptable. And I am a little bit troubled that it's sounding like, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's sounding to me like you're going to tell the township to get into the cattle chute and just go along with the process as DEP is laying it out, rather than being very clear that, in fact, there are significant data and information gaps that need to be filled, that need to be identified before this township and these supervisors should be expected to go on the record and go along with the game that's being played by DEP. You're supposed to be advocating, actually, not for the supervisors, but for these people. And it sounds to me like you're just going along to get along. That's what it sounds like, that's what it feels like, that these data gaps are acceptable, that this lack of information is acceptable, that it's okay not to be considering where you yourself acknowledge that the most significant source or sources of some of the contaminants might be in the deep bedrock, but that's not even being considered, that's not even being addressed, that's not even known. It may be the most significant source and that's not addressed, that there is this issue about, as you characterized it, I think, the most dangerous type of chromium, hexavalent chromium. They're still testing to see if it's there, how much it's there, where it is. So I just want to suggest to you that, hopefully, I'm misunderstanding, but that your job is to be the experts and advocates from a scientific perspective for this community to say to DEP what is or is not acceptable in terms of the quality of information that's being given, as well as the quality of the recommendation that's being proposed. And it doesn't sound like you're intending to do that. Again, you're, it sounds like you're saying, township, get in the cattle chute, let's just comment, and DEP will do its thing. And instead, should be saying, it's too premature. It sounds more like DEP is trying to get out from under the litigation that is challenging their failure to act for all these decades by suggesting that they're acting because they've thrown some paper out into the world, rather than fully and fairly fulfilling their obligations under the law and under the Constitution. So I think it's important for you to have that in your mindset and your perspective. And I think that's what you should be expecting of your experts.
That's not what I'm hearing or thinking from them. I hear holes and holes and holes. And DEP is just trying to do what the federal government does, which is kick the can down the road. That's all they're trying to do.
Well, maybe we'll see that in the comments, but I hear an acknowledgement of holes and holes and holes, but this is okay. In the end, we're going to get potentially, we'll see where we come out. Hopefully, I hope that your hearing is better than mine, because I'm, that's not actually what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Well, that's not what I think.
The acknowledgement of data gaps is different than taking the position that those data and information gaps are so significant that this process is fundamentally flawed and premature, and the township should not be expected to be signing off on this. And I would want to hear, and I think you identified some important gaps, a complete absolute list of all the data gaps, all the informational problems that are in these materials, along with a position of how can the township take a position? So hopefully, Rich, we end up where you're at. Not what I'm hearing, but that's not what I'm hearing. I've seen a lot of experts in operation, but good.
Well, that's an excellent series of comments. I don't quite know how to start responding to it. But obviously, we are bringing these points and these data gaps up in this public context exactly to initiate those kinds of discussions. And certainly, I would expect that at least some of them will make their way into the comments that the township will propose. And I guess I'll just ask the question, other than put them out in public in the form of comments to PADP, you know, the township isn't in a position to approve or deny the PADP's approach. You know, commenting is the way that we can make some influence on this plan, which is certainly not complete at this point, so.
Yeah. So, but again, to me, that's going in the cattle chute. So one can comment.
I'd rather not wait another 50 years for something to happen.
But actually, the, yes, put it all on the record. But the actually, the more appropriate understanding of this process is not only is this a public comment process, but this is the official record. This is laying the groundwork for whether or not the township could actually take a legal action, could join the Delaware Riverkeeper Network in our legal action, challenging the DEP's failure to fully, fairly and properly implement the law in timeliness and quality of response. And so that, those comments need to be very, very clearly laying out the possibility, right, the foundation for a legal challenge, when or if DEP comes out with another fundamentally flawed plan. Again, paper and words don't mean that you're fulfilling your obligations under the law or putting forth a good recommendation, right? It could all just be, could all just be crap, right? So this is not just about commenting and trying to cajole DEP into doing the right thing. DEP has a history of not doing the right thing when it comes to this site. And so the township should be fully prepared to have to bring a legal challenge, again, perhaps to join the Delaware Riverkeeper Network and the staffers in our ongoing legal challenge to the fundamental failure of DEP to fulfill the requirements of the law and the Constitution. So that's why I say cattle chute. You can just put in comments because you're trying to cajole them, or you can truly represent the township and make sure that their legal posture and position is fully and properly represented. So if the township chose to bring legal action, it would be well primed to do so.
This is it.
Well primed to do so.
This is Maya talking.
Yes, this is Maya talking, and I can hear you. So don't say anything bad about Maya, although probably doing it anyway, it's all right. So I just, I wanted to make that point about recognizing what, in fact, this process is that really is another fundamentally important piece. And I do, I do just want to share that I am deeply concerned about the perspective that the failure of DEP to put in place a plan or a set of recommendations or an assessment that is based upon the known approved end use of the township is troubling. It does fundamentally change, you may say, and I think you even said, you even used the term "may." This may be appropriate if it was residential, but it may not be. And there may be a more appropriate, right? You can, you can do the lowest common denominator, you could get the minimum level of protection, or you could get the best level of protection. And so again, I think that it is really important. With all due respect, Scott, you read out the limitations, but we are in court over that, too. And if anybody's interested, November 15th, 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse in Chester County, people can come hear for themselves about the concerns of at least the Delaware Riverkeeper Network with the township signing off with a preliminary approval on this site, and how you did not need to do that, and how all those conditions are also a fundamental failure of the responsibilities of the township under its own laws and under its constitutional obligation to protect the environmental rights. So if anybody's interested, it's November 15th, 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse. And you can hear both sides, right? But I do think there, too, I think you need to appreciate and embrace that the township has said residential development and that the DEP, knowing residential development, isn't intending to do anything. And they have repeatedly said, it's not up to us, it's the township. So as much as the township wants to say, we're not going to let this happen until DEP acts, DEP has said, it's not up to us, it's the township. So it is a little bit foolish to be putting eggs into that basket. And I would encourage you to go back with your assessment and put on your hat of, this is going to be, or whatever is the right terminology, this is going to be, this is planned for residential development, and there has, in fact, already been preliminary approval. And should these, you know, how does this stack up in terms of all the options with that in mind? I can tell you already, I mean, we have a set of three experts at the Delaware Riverkeeper Network taking a look at this proposal. And I've got a whole huge list, too, of concerns. But amongst them is the failure to consider the remedy with that end use in mind, that that, according to my experts and all the different aspects, for every single kind of expert I have, that that is really a fundamentally important deficiency in what's being proposed and what's not being proposed, and the, you know, the lack of information, the lack of data, the lack of understanding. Like, how many times did they say, more data is needed, more analysis is needed, more data is needed, more analysis is needed? Well, it's been how many decades? There shouldn't be any, we should have full, fair, total, complete information, 100% right now, and as complete a plan as absolutely possible before the township should be expected to go on board. Now, I didn't send you an email on that, Scott, so you shouldn't be really...
Thank you.
You didn't, but a few other people did.
I know, but I was the most creepy of thirty.
Any other comments?
Doesn't seem to be anyone like, no.
Yeah, I just have a couple of short ones. Have you ever seen this kind of an outline of a remedy work in the past or even be used in the past on similar sites in your experience?
I mean, I wouldn't say this is fundamentally different from a typical record of decision like on an EPA Superfund site. There's usually, you know, for an EPA Superfund site, a little bit more of a fully formed concept, I will admit, but it's not fundamentally different, I would say, from a typical rod. I mean, you might disagree, I don't know, but...
This concept is injecting things into the, and that same concept, has that been used much in your experience?
Well, Tony should definitely dive in on that one. But yes, they're pretty well-established technologies that have been used on any number of sites. So, you know, and there's plenty of well-accepted guidance from EPA and others on the subject. You should...
It's actually being used more often than not than, say, the pump-and-treat method of groundwater remediation, because it, pump-and-treat takes time. Sites are, they are cleaning up sites quicker, but it's chemistry, it's science, it's understanding distribution. You gotta know what you're doing.
If ever you have ever used on this site, and it is not successful, or as far as you know, and this may be a legal question, are the PRPs still responsible to take the next step to try something else?
It's probably more of a legal question, but I know that's a question that we have internally as well, is, you know, who's responsible? Who's paying for this? What if it doesn't work? Who's going to do it?
Yeah, that's all I have.
I have a question. When they're talking, when you're talking about this soil mixing, how much of the area is going to be disturbed to do that? I mean, it isn't specified as to what areas get, that sounds like the most dangerous in terms of release of chemicals and vapors. Are they doing the entire 13 acres? Are they doing 20 square feet? What are they doing?
Yeah, I mean, that is generally laid out in the assessment that was provided by PADP, and that was the second map of the site specific that I showed up that blocked out those 10 individual areas that were identified as potentially requiring remediation. Off the top of my head, I don't know what the acreage of those are, but it's only a small fraction of the total.
But it's every one of the squares that was on the early maps.
Right. Some of those, some of the small ones that are just in organics may get kicked out because they, they might have had hexavalent chromium, but don't. But otherwise, it's those, all those squares on the map.
Do you want to come back up?
Yes. This is just a comment on procedure. It's just common, which is not connected. Like, nobody, they can't hear you.
No one, no one in the audience can hear you.
They can hear you if you don't have that... What? What? Okay. This site was identified and handed on to DEP in 1999. It was known about before that. As soon as a site is in charge of whatever the organization is and the PRPs or whatever you want to call them, potentially responsible parties, have been identified, and they were identified by EPA, then the next step is to monitor the site that hasn't been done, that should have been done all along. And then maybe we would be farther along in this whole procedure than we are now. How many years? That's it. That's all I have to say. I'm getting better at it.
I have, I have one just general question. As you were reading through these, the DEP report, Nick, based on these contaminants that are in the soil, and I know there's not a specific remediation solution, but of the general ones that they're talking about, what type of success is there of not having the contamination, like, reoccur, either through some natural sources or an area that's missed that expands a plume of that, just a kind of a success rate?
Right. I mean, that definitely is the... Right, I mean, that definitely is the primary risk here, that remediation will be implemented, it may not fully address, speaking for the TCE at first, it could potentially not reach all of the dean apple material in the fractured bedrock, and then the, you know, the plume may decrease, but then increase again. That is a fundamental problem that makes remediation of fractured bedrock and dean apple in specific very difficult. I would say that this type of approach may have the potential to be more successful. You know, having biological remedies as one of the components is, is going to have an ongoing effect in reducing the concentrations of TCE. So it's definitely a risk, and this is a particularly challenging site, and that's why I believe they've set their kind of bar a little bit low as far as reducing off-site transport and contributing to retracting the plume. They're not, they're basically not saying they're going to clean it all up with this remediation. And so I think they're acknowledging that difficulty. You can address that to some extent by having the right studies in place and knowing the right approach and monitoring in the process of implementing the remediation, but it, it definitely is a real problem. Tony, maybe you want to add anything to that, or?
I mean, what Nick said, it, it's a complex site with the fractured bedrock, the, the connectivity of the overburden to, to the deeper groundwater and the multiple organics, inorganics VOCs in the water. So it's, it's, it is a complex site, is what we, we'll call it. I know you don't want to hear that, but it's, it's, it's a complex site. But definitely go after the source, get the source out of the water, out of the soil where you can get it to help retract that plume.
Okay. Thank you. Donna, anyone else having any questions?
No.
Board?
No.
Residents in attendance? Maya? Non-resident in attendance?
I'm here for the residents.
I know. Okay, yeah.
Bill Conigan, 74, Village Way. C-O-N-E?
G-H-E-N.
I'm a resident on Village Way since 1994 and have heard several stories about people having shelter in place while some emissions and/or explosions happened at... One of the reasons why I don't produce any veg... I don't produce any vegetables. My initial impression of the, of the DEP's presentation was that it was extremely flexible. It could be anything and it could be nothing. I was not happy with the fact that it was set to be a plan that was going to be commented on by the end of January, and yet we weren't given enough information personally to know what that plan would be and how to either encourage it or to reject it. So I'm not sure what the point of DEP's presentation of that was other than just to say that's all. It wasn't worth my time or effort at the end of it to say I can make a decision about it, that I could say this was beneficial or this was not workable. On the meeting on Monday, I will be voicing that same opinion and expressing my deep distress at the fact that they were, DEP was trying to present something to me that made no sense and was so open-ended that I really couldn't... One of the concerns I had beyond the EPA's efforts or DEP's efforts to present some sort of plan was that for the last, since 1999 when the plant was closed, there was no effort made by DEP to address contaminants leaving from that site. My son was three when we moved here, and so since then, my son and any other children that have moved in, grown up, or born in the, in the village have had that aura of danger in some way, either through the water in the area or through vapors coming in down, down the street, that they could be affected by these hazardous chemicals. So my frustration and my resentment toward DEP stems from personally that and petition, this last attempt, this last effort presents something as if we're going, some plan as if it were going to contain the pollutants and make that area less hazardous when in fact they haven't done anything at least since 1999. So that is my, my thoughts and my objections to the proposed plan that DEP has presented.
Hi, Maya Van Rossum again. So I do have a process question, yes. So in terms of the, you know, because of the advocacy of the public, the DEP has extended the public comment period from January 3rd to January 31st, it is. But of course, they still maintain this November 9th hearing date, which is odd to say the least, right, because it's very early in the process. And as you know, there's a lot of documents to get through and a lot of technical information.
Twenty-two thousand pages, roughly.
Good number. So it's really frankly premature, you know, they, that, it was absurd that they held, we asked them to change the hearing to a Q and A, right? And instead, they put out their little video and, but then changed the end, end of the comment process. But I did want to ask for the township's comments, your expert review, are, what is your, what is your intention in terms of the process? So are you going to finalize comments at some point and submit them? Is there going to be a draft that actually you're going to prepare and that the township is going to share with the public so that in fact the public could do a review? Is there, I want the people to hear, so that there's going to be the opportunity for other experts to take a look, as you can hear, there's a lot of tech... So what is going to be your intent and process and the timing, given the end date of January? I don't know, not sure who I'm asking, but...
If you want to cover that, I know you could...
It's going to be our letter or one of our letters.
Right, but I guess there...
Eric, Steve, you go.
Yeah, in, in short, the township plans the second meeting, and that will, we haven't set a date yet. Originally, when we were looking at the 90-day schedule or 100-day schedule, whatever it was, we were trying to deal with, like everyone was, the year-end holidays and trying to figure out when to squeeze that meeting in. Now, we don't have to do that, we have a little luxury of some time to more thoughtfully consider, you know, our comments. But to be direct and answer your question, we will present draft comments to the public at the second meeting. So yes, you will get an opportunity to see those comments, read those comments, hear us present them, and you may comment on the, on the comments and influence what is ultimately submitted.
Thank you, and I agree with you on that year-end nonsense from DEP. And if anybody didn't have the fun of reading my letter, I had a really good time writing it to DEP. It's a good letter, go online and read it. They were really taken to task, it took them two days to turn, turn around. And the community wrote letters, so, anyway, FYI. If you didn't read that, because I did copy you all on, it's a good one.
And we, and Maya, we also sent a letter to DEP at the request of, of some residents extending, asking for the Q and A to occur.
Great, great, that's, oh, yes, I heard you say that at November 9th. Did they respond?
No, they did not respond directly back to us, but we did send a letter out to them.
Great, glad that you did that. And residents were like right on it, writing to DEP as well, and so they did, they turned, they turned around and just, it's the power of the people and taking DEP to task for trying to ruin everybody's holidays but their own, right? They were fine. Everybody else, we all, everybody else's holiday was ruined, including all yours, so...
Well, thank you, everyone in attendance, and thank you, BSTI folks, for the information. I think it was very helpful. I know it's a convoluted process, but I'm pleased with what we've been able to accomplish here this, this afternoon. Look forward to the second one.
Whether you look forward to the second one or not, it's going to depend on the draft time.
Sure.
We will.
Sure.
If they're really great quality and take the right stance of the community, it'll be a great meeting, you'll get lots of feedback.
Yep. All right, thank you, concluding.